May I have a motion to exit executive session and return to public session? First trustee Mitchell Morrell, second trustee Ramondo, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. We will now open the hearing to, for authorizing the use of funds from the repair reserve fund to fix the tennis courts. Yeah, she was just getting her computer. I was just getting my computer up here. Too many things open. So, thank you so much for allowing me to put this on, on the agenda. So, I had sent a memo to everyone on the board, I believe, or sent it to Victoria. Sent it to Victoria, who sent it to the board. So, in speaking with Kyle Harges, our facilities director, we are requesting to use the repair reserve, some of the repair reserve money to repair the tennis courts at the middle school, high school. In looking back, and I do remember this. It was actually budgeted, and Valerie probably remembers this too. It was actually budgeted as part of the 2020-2021 transfer to capital. We had presented it to the voters. We were going to do the tennis courts in addition to the Bennett HVAC unit work. And there was $750,000 in the budget to do that work. Unfortunately, due to COVID and inflation, the Bennett HVAC work took up all of the budget, plus a little more because then we had to dip into the CHRISA in order to actually finish the project, which sadly just got finished this summer, which is what, 2023? No, yeah. So, it took longer than expected to begin with. So, and in between all that, we've had three different athletic directors, I believe, since 2020. So, Kyle has done a fabulous job of repairing the tennis courts, making it safe for our students to play. We have a lot of community that play on it as well. Unfortunately, we believe, and Jana has agreed with us, that we're getting to the point where it might not be possible to play safely on that tennis court. So, Kyle did his due diligence, and he went out and he got a couple of bids. And for approximately $150,000, we can do the work. The contractor is available to do it after tennis season is over. That way, our community can use it over the summer. And yes, so there is a resolution on the agenda for the board to approve using the repair reserve money in order to do that.
I just wanted to add that the memo with all of that information, as well as the quote, is on the, is on board docs in public content. So, people did have an opportunity to review that information.
Uh, trustee, just trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Just curious, when was the last time they were resurfaced?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'm gonna say a long time ago. Trustee Jerome?
Um, I'm just gonna say that there's nothing sadder than a cracked and unsafe tennis court. And I know that our community, not during school hours, I understand, but after, is welcome on the courts to use it. There's a very fervent group of tennis players in our community. And for our students, absolutely, I support this 100%.
Any other trustee comments? Any public comments about the tennis courts? Thanks for your support. Yeah, I'm totally with trustee Jerome, I 100% support it. So, but we'll vote when the resolution is on the agenda. Anything else about that at all? Okay, great. Thank you. And we will close the public hearing. And on to item 4.01, our welcome tonight from principal Scott Richards and his team.
Welcome to Woodstock. I did bring a couple of guests today with me. I have Ms. Heekin and Ms. Parishan, they're second grade teachers. They're gonna jump on the back end of my very short presentation tonight, which is kinda nice. And I just have a couple of very quick highlights, things that have been going on here at Woodstock since you were here last. And I have to turn this on. Since you were here last, we did celebrate Read Across America Week. This was facilitated by our reading teachers, Mr. Vale and Ms. Palaco. We had a really, really fun-filled week. We had a lot of different events. We had theme of the day, things like animal day, crazy hair day. Kids really loved it. We had book of the day, which you'll see Mr. Vale in the top left-hand corner. He placed books in there, and classroom teachers would take their classes in on a daily basis and read them, kind of the book of the day. We also had a lot of different whole school events. We had Ravens Beard come and speak with us. We had book swaps, we had flashlight reading, and we had book tasting, which they basically set up a room in the school that looked like an Italian restaurant, and kids kinda came in and sampled different books. It was a very nice environment. I really wanted a meatball when I was in there, but they didn't have any of those. We also just started our yoga residency, which I believe the last meeting that I was here for, you did approve that residency. It's for all K through three students. It's a week long, started this week. Every student's involved. We started this a few years back, and it's really nice to see that it's continued. Ms. Roth is the one that runs it. She kinda organizes it, schedules it, does a really nice job with that. We also just recently held our PTA talent show. It's been a few years since we've had a talent show here. It was, we had about 20 different participants or acts. We had comedy, dance, singing, acting, you name it. Teachers even participated in a few acts. They had the bobble heads, which you'll see some of their faces around the room. And they danced and put on a routine with pictures of themselves when they were younger. It was really, really cute. And here's just a picture of some students as well. And we had the science fair, and I'm gonna let Erica talk about that, since she kind of coordinates our science fair.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, so we had our science fair on Thursday, the 14th. It was a great event. As the organizer, you never know if people are actually gonna bring projects or not, but it was a really, really great turnout. As in the years past, our kindergarteners explored collections by collecting different things they were interested in and sorting them. You can see up there, we had a friend use an egg carton to sort different types of Legos by color, which is very appropriate for that grade level. We had first graders doing life cycle posters, which ties to their science curriculum. Second graders do models. They pick something that they're interested in, whether it's the solar system, or a habitat, or volcanoes, and they create a model about that. We had lots of volcanoes this year. And then in third grade, we've been doing engineering or experiments. They kind of get to choose. And we have like a list of engineering challenges, which include like a marble run, where you'll see one of the students used recycled like candy boxes and wrappers and stuff to make one. There's an egg drop, there's creating a chair out of paper for your stuffed animal to sit on. And then they read about the engineering design process. And then for the experiments, they read about the scientific method, and then they choose a question they want to explore with an experiment. It was a really great day. We had students viewing the projects from 2:30 to 3:00. And I provided them with just kind of a note-taking sheet, where they could write or draw about their favorite project that they saw in each grade level. And then we invited the community and parents and families to come from 6:00 to 7:00 to view the projects. It was really wonderful. So, Ms. Heekin and I are here to talk a little bit about what we're doing in writing and how it is tying to our community. So, this unit that we're doing is called Finding Awesome Everywhere. It's part of the new Teachers College Reading and Writing Project units that just came out. And in this unit, it's new to us, but the ideas and the themes are similar to what we've been doing in the past. In this unit, we drew from inspiration from an author named Neil Parishka. And he actually started a blog during the pandemic to just point out everyday things that were awesome, to kind of bring happiness to his life. So, we showed the students some of those things, and we started the unit by thinking about everyday things that are awesome, like tacos, and puppies, and candy, and just every day doing like a quick write about something that you think is awesome. So, really exploring that opinion, that big feeling about a topic, but that's accessible to them with everyday things. In the second part of the unit, we moved into using that structure to talk about how books are awesome. So, we are, we use this structure with our opinion, our reasons, our examples, and then we restate our opinion. And as teachers, we're always looking for ways to connect our learning to the real world and our community, which is where the Woodstock Library comes in.
Hi, good to see you guys. So, with this unit being awesome, awesomer than it was, than it had been. They really updated their curriculum. And it's always been very age-appropriate. Second graders love to talk. That's scientifically proven. And they love to share their opinion. And so, when the Woodstock Library asked us for contributions to a new segment of their newsletter called Junior Friend Book Pick. So, they've had So they've had, uh, Friend Book Pick as part of their newsletter for a while, and they, they're always trying to integrate into the school community in different ways and with the kids. And, um, it was a perfect matchup with what we were doing. So, um, they have 40 different, um, you know, opinion-writing pieces about books that the children recommend to the community. Um, up here you can see, um, inside the green lines are, um, kind of like the header they have, like, new, what'd it say? New feature. My log vision just started going on me. Hmm. Um, so yeah, they're calling it a new feature, and that each week they're gonna feature a different child. So they've typed out their writing, um, there's a link to the book, and then the, each child did a picture with it, so the picture will be up there in their own drawings. Um, and then to check that out, you either, um, go to the website and sign up, and they send it to your email, or it's on their Facebook page, there's a link to it. Um, and it's, it's just, the other piece of having the partnership that was really exciting for the kids is when they have an audience that they know, that they, then it helps these young minds, um, create voice in their writing, which is always at the trickiest, like, higher-level thinking piece for this grade level. Um, and it really encouraged engagement, motivation, excitement, all those things we look for in great, great teaching and great classroom environment. So we were really grateful for that partnership.
So we just put together like a two-minute video that just kinda highlights some of the different book reviews, uh, that they did. Um, hopefully the sound's okay. First three are a little quieter than the last three. Um, that's somebody's recording issue. It was me. All right. You got it, John?
Um, I think that bus don't let the teacher drive. Because the bus is awesome. One reason is, is funny. What, one example of being funny is he keeps asking to drive the house. But he can't.
I think legendary and mythical Pokemon is awesome. One reason is because it, there is good stories. For example, it tells you more about the Reggie Pokemon. Another reason is because it has my favorite Pokemon. Also, it has cool drawings.
A book to my disaster, one reason they put a new name on the, what, Max and Cat ones. For example, a lion and a bear in the middle. Um, it's Peter that was there, and Peter that's a baby.
I think Max and Zoe, asked by Shelby Swanson, is awesome. One reason is it's funny. For example, Max's dress was so messy. Secondly, it made me happy.
I think Junie Jones is a beauty shop guy, but Barbara Park is awesome. One reason is the haircut is so bad, it's funny. An example is Maxine cuts Junie B's hair. Another reason is it's hilarious. Another example is Junie B cuts her toy's hair. Lastly, it's funny. Last example is Junie B changes her name. And that's why I think Junie Jones is a beauty shop guy, but Barbara Park is awesome.
I think Rocket's hook scanner by Armored Mobile is awesome. One reason is it's sad and happy. For example, Totoro thinks to do now, he went on a walk with Fluffy, and a lot of wind came and blew it out of his hair. Rocket said, "They finally grew." That's why I think Rocket's all ears awesome.
Nice job. Very exciting. Uh, so with that, have a great meeting and, uh, we, yep.
Thank you all. Mr. Richards, I just have one question for you. Did, did you do anything special with your hair on Crazy Hair Day?
I don't know if I want that, uh, microphone.
Okay. Okay. No comment. Thank you. All right, so we are moving on to item 5.01. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Leclerc, will present the 2024-25 Updated Expenditure Budget. Okay, so here we are again. I always have to follow the good stuff, the kids. I wanna be before the kids. Um, so where are we with the 24-25 budget? Good question. So before we start that, I thought it would be a good idea. I did, I did this slide this time last year as kind of, um, a way to show how our enrollment really does vary. So we can say we had a change of 39 kids since July 1st, but when you look at it, we had 102 students leave, we had 63 come in. So it's not just about the, the, the total, not like the difference between the two, it's the fact that there, there are a lot of moving parts. And of these kids that leave and of these kids that come in, the needs of the students, the ages of the students, um, also affects our, you know, our overall enrollment. But you can see that since 2021 to today, we've, we've lost a total of 144 students. And this is all post-COVID. So where are we? Or where did we leave off at the last meeting? It's a good thing I brought this, that is pretty far away. So when we left after the March 5th board meeting, um, I had showed you an expenditure budget of, um, sixty-two million, three hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and, oh, I'm guessing 40, cause I left a number off there, with a revenue, um, budget of 60 million, thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight. So as you can see, our expenditures had outweighed our revenues. With, um, to, to the tune of a little over 2.2 million. And I had said to you at the time, what can we do? We can look at further reductions, use more fund balance, look at potentially exceeding the tax cap, um, and again, um, do what we can to try to get our aid restored. So, to that end, where are we with the state budget? So, uh, last week or, or so, ASBO, that's the Association of School Business Officials, a group that I work with very closely, I'm sure you can imagine, um, gave us an update and where they said that there was an overwhelmingly large response from the legislature opposing the Hold Harmless. Now, we've heard that from a lot of people. And also rejecting the change in the CPI. They also agreed to, uh, an additional 1.35 billion dollars to be added to the state budget as far as revenue, and that the Senate and Assembly, um, one-house budgets were gonna be released soon. Um, the fourth bullet has me a little concerned that since the end of the fiscal year for the state also happens to fall on Easter weekend, um, the governor has, um, indicated that she really did not want the budget to interrupt religious observances, so she has already scheduled legislative sessions through the first two weeks of April. So fast forward to this week or late last week, the one-house budgets did come out. Um, I'm sure you guys spent as much time delving into it as I did. Um, just, you know, the highlights that both the Senate and the Assembly want to restore all Save Harmless Foundation aid cuts, uh, and provide a minimum 3% increase for all districts, both the House and the, um, both the Senate and the Assembly. So that is fabulous news. Um, in addition, um, they wanna reject the inflation calculation, they're looking at, at, uh, increasing the BOSI's aidable salary cap. That has been a, um, request by my organization, ASBO, for many years, as NISBA and all of that, because we only get aid from the BOSI's up to that $30,000 salary cap. As I'm sure you can imagine, there aren't a lot of instructors at BOSI's that only make 30,000. So this would help us with more BOSI's aid. Um, and then there's a few other things, um, in there. So, however, at this point, we do not have a state budget. So I feel it necessary to present to you what I would consider a budget that would still provide a healthy instruction to our students, but at a, at a cost, because if we don't get state aid, we don't have a choice. Um, so this budget would actually be a decrease from our current budget of 144,350 dollars, or about a quarter of a percent less than what our current budget is. So kind of looking at the different areas, I'm sure you're not surprised that our number one area of increase is our transportation. We've spent a lot of time on this. Um, unfortunately, due to many factors, we are looking at a 14% increase, and that is with decreasing six runs. So we are also looking to purchase two new vehicles for our own transportation department, um, a 28-passenger and a 66-passenger, and that is because we do still do many runs ourselves for our BOSI students, for some of our special ed runs. It gives us flexibility having our own staff do these runs versus having all of our, uh, runs contracted out to first student. Oh, and please, if you have a specific question about anything, don't bother, don't, don't, it's okay to interrupt me. So our second area of increase is, um, general support, and this really covers many different areas. Um, I believe I mentioned to you before that we're seeing increases in BOSI's admin and capital costs, um, legal costs, insurance. We're actually seeing a large increase in refunding of our property taxes. So what happens after the tax, after all of our taxes have been levied, we then get, uh, settlements from the county, this company called Aventine, who will, for, for a fee, go out and get your assessments reduced, and you get a tax refund. So our taxes have already been levied, so that comes out of our budget. Um, because of the high equalization rate in Woodstock, we're seeing a lot of them from Woodstock. And then we also have some legal judgments and claims that we will need to be paid, that we will need to pay next year. Number three area of increase, our employee benefits. Again, no surprise there, uh, just under 4%. Uh, we're looking, again, 7.65% of all salaries is FIC and Medicare. It includes workers' comp insurance, union benefits, our retirement expenses, teacher retirement system, TRS, at 10.5, employee retirement at ERS, um, at 15.2. We're also looking at health insurance increases that are more than the tax cap. So for active employees, uh, the rates will increase a little over 6% for retired, for our retirees that are Medicare-eligible, because Medicare is their primary, and, uh, the coverage they have in the district is their secondary. Uh, their increases will be 2%, so the average is about 5%. As I mentioned, we do have quite a few retirees this year that will all be going from our, moving from our active side of the, of the spreadsheet to our retiree's side of the spreadsheet. And if you look at the last bullet, that we are budgeting 252 active employees that we will cover next year and 353 retirees. So they live a long life. So as far as our areas of decrease, because thankfully, if it weren't for areas of decrease, we wouldn't be able to afford our areas of increase. So we did, um, pay off the energy performance contract, so our debt service is dropping from 271,000 this year to 63,000 next year. The problem is, of course, that can only ever happen once, that once we save that money, we can't save it again next year. In addition, we are going, we would look to reduce the inter-fund transfer from 965,000 to 665. So we would reduce the transfer to capital from 500 to 250,000, and then reduce the transfer to food service from 385 to 335,000. Excuse me. Instruction had, um, had also is looking at a decrease. Um, it is the largest piece of our budget. So besides the obvious contractual salary increases that we need to cover, we are also looking at increase in special ed services, um, in order to counteract that. We are looking at the potential of a reduction of instructional positions, and I should actually say it's not just instructional. You know, we're looking at trying to, if, and again, I'm saying this as if, if we need to. Our hope is still that we, you know, that we get our state aid, that we have Hold Harmless, and, and everything I'm saying tonight, you can promptly forget as soon as the budget passes, because that's what I'm gonna do. But if needed, um, reduction of BOSI services, reduction of field trips, reduction of equipment, reduction of outside consulting, and a reduction of professional development. And in, in, in looking at these, we really looked at how to, how to affect the least amount in one specific area. So just kind of tweaking a little bit everywhere, which is not easy, cause we have a lot in, you know, like every, every building, every department. I mean, everybody does wonderful things, and trying to take a, only as little away as possible to make the numbers match without affecting the overall, um, experience of students, that is our hope. So our number four area of decrease is, uh, operations and maintenance. So we had a resignation this year, so we are not going to fill it. Then, um, you know, uh, obviously, one of the biggest issues in operation and maintenance is it requires a lot of equipment. Uh, we are looking to purchase some equipment next year, but not as much as in prior years. So Kyle is looking for a walk-behind mower, a lawn, lawn air raider for the grounds, make our fields look a little better, a UTV, and a dump truck. So, given all that, where are we now? So our revenues are still at the 60 million, thirty-five thousand, five sixty-eight. Our expenditures are now at 61 million, 178,200, which leaves us a delta of little over 1.1 million. So again, we could look at further reductions if needed, we could use more fund balance, we could exceed the tax cap. Again, we don't recommend that. And again, our hope is that we do get that aid restored. One of the questions that you asked me last time was about our reserves and our fund balance. Do I have an extra? I'll fix that. So I apologize, in your packet, you've got an extra zero. So we have, um, we have a lot of reserves. Um, they are for specific purposes. Our first one, the unemployment reserve, has 750,000 in it. Our ERS, our Employee Retirement System Reserve, has, uh, 4.5 million. Our TRS has a little over 2 million. Employee Benefit Reserve, 1.6. Our two capital reserves, the, uh, 73,001, a little over 4 million another, and the repair reserve currently has 987,000, a little less if you approve the resolution tonight, for a total currently of 13.9 in, um, reserves. We also have fund balance, we have two pieces of fund balance, and the first is the unassigned, so that's kind of like our emergency fund. You know how they say always keep a little bit of cash in the bank for an emergency? So we've got 2.4 million in, in our emergency fund. And then we also used 3.27 million, um, to, uh, put towards the budget to balance it for this year. So if we don't use it, we keep it, if we use it, then that goes down. So as you can see, all told, we have a little over 19 million. And I linked to the left, so if you're online, when you look at this, the link to the left is a hot link to actually the description to all of the reserves, and how they're used, when, you know, when they could be used, how they could be used, how they can be funded, all of that. And we also do have a reserve plan, so if you're on our website, I believe it is under District Plans. So it shows when the, when the reserves were created, why they're So it shows when the, when the reserves were created, why they're funded, like why is unemployment 750? There's guidelines. So if you're interested in that, you can look at that now, or you can just wait till June when I report on next year's fund balance. So I also mentioned at the last board meeting that we were looking to put a second proposition on the budget vote. And this is to authorize a capital improvement project. And this is really to kind of help fund any additional costs, if needed, for the, some of the current projects that we have, the generator, the high school generator, the exterior door project, the classroom renovation project. That includes the classrooms, the gymnasiums, the roof, and a security vestibule and canopy, along with a new serving line at the middle school, high school. So in case, I can't remember, I know those on the facilities committee have seen the security vestibule. So the security vestibule and the canopy were part of the initial 8.8 million dollar project that the voters voted on, but because of the more detailed requirements, this has not gone to SED yet. So this is actually going to go to SED within the next, I think, week or so. So the hope is, now that we know that the other project is delayed, that this one will get approved, that one will be approved, and we can do the whole thing at the same time next summer. The security vestibule, I think, I think it's, it's very much needed. It's, it's, they, CPL did a fabulous job in designing it, working with our administrators. It really is gonna be, it's gonna, it's gonna help make our school and our students safer. And I'm not sure if this is exactly the serving line that Chrissy wanted, but I couldn't, I couldn't find another picture, but you can kind of get an idea what a serving line is. I'm sure the kids will like it. So, timeline. What does it look like? So if we have an on-time state budget, our hope is that we can still present the superintendent's recommended budget at the April 9th meeting, that the board will adopt it at the, on the 16th meeting. Our budget hearing will be May 7th, our budget vote, May 21st. If for some reason, we have a late budget, we have a couple of options. So if we have a late budget, really nothing to do on the 9th. On the 16th, we can give the superintendent's recommended budget. The Board of Ed could adopt the budget that night as well. Or we could have another meeting on the 22nd, and the Board of Ed could adopt the budget at that point. The budget hearing would still have to be May 7th, and obviously, the budget vote has to be May 21st. So really, a few things still up in the air. My hope is that I will be able to, we will be able to bring you a superintendent's recommended budget on the 9th. But however, we are prepared to do it on the 16th. So just so that you're aware, you might want to free your schedule for the 22nd, just Okay, anybody have any questions? Yes, Emily?
Hi. So the, in theory, the proposition two could be added to the May vote for the board as well, would be those two things on the ballot?
So, no, the proposition two, the board needs to approve tonight. Because it has to be, state ed has some interesting rules. So the budget proposition, the board has until April 22nd. Any other proposition, so if we were looking to do a cap, do another capital reserve or anything, any other proposition has to be approved by the board prior to the first notice in the paper. And the first notice in the paper is around the 1st of April. So that's why this, the proposition two is actually on the agenda for you guys to approve tonight.
And I just have a more logistical question, but if we had to, could we move the board meetings up a week so that if there's a late, if the budget is late, to do the 16th and the 22nd, or we would just meet all three times?
The 9th, the 16th, and the 22nd?
I'm not sure. Are you just asking if we would, we would meet as scheduled, but then add the 22nd if needed?
Right, or just move them all up one?
Well, the 16th-
I think we would still meet as scheduled.
At this point, we wouldn't have time to amend the board meeting calendar, because the 9th is the next meeting.
Yeah.
But if we don't have a budget, then with any, I mean, I would hope that either the 16th or the 22nd would be a very brief meeting, if we were just moving for the final board adoption. And I just wanted to go back to your question about the proposition. The board will approve it, but it will appear on the ballot in May, if that's what you were asking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I felt like that's where you were, you were going. Yes.
My apologies.
But as my, as, as Ms. Leclerc said, the state requires the board to approve the proposition to go on the ballot earlier than approving the budget, which I don't quite understand why, but that's just the way they have the rules. And then I just wanted to add that we have been having some discussions, because in, certainly in my history in schools, although it hasn't happened recently, there have been times when the state budget was adopted after we are required to approve a budget to bring to the voters. And so we've kind of been talking through, if that were to be the case, then we might want to employ a strategy of saying, this is the largest budget we would have, and if we don't get the aid to fund it, we can spend less. But if we were to approve a budget to bring to the voters with the worst-case scenario, and then we get more money, we can't actually increase our budget to match the increased revenue. You can't spend more than the budget that's approved, but you can spend less. So we're just sort of talking that through. Hopefully, that won't be the position we're in. Hopefully, the state will provide us with a budget and with the revenue clarity that we need before we need to adopt a budget. But those are some of the things that we're trying to think through, to try and place the district in the best position possible.
Trustee Goodrich?
I just want to clarify, I will not be here on the 22nd of April.
Trustee Lynch?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Leclerc. I was curious about a few things. One, would it, would it be appropriate to just ask the impact of some of the reductions? Or is that more appropriate for the superintendent? For example, I'm just curious, like, could you help me understand, what would the impact be if we, number one and two area of decrease, just as an example? What's the impact of the reduction to food service from 385 to 335? What does that look like for kids and, and staff?
So it, I mean, that's really, that, that's really a Chrissy, a Chrissy question, but it might be less Try It Tuesdays instead of, you know, it might be less local and maybe a little more, you know, government-issued chicken. It, you know, it's really, when you look at the money that we give food service, most school districts do not fund their food service at all. Their food service needs to be 100% self-sustaining. So we, in this district, have, for decades, you know, felt it was important to give our kids better food than other, than, than other schools do. So while this may look like, oh, we're not giving our kids the best food, we're still giving them very good food.
And the reduction of transfer to capital?
So that would just mean- Trustee Lynch, just hold on one second.
So sorry, I, you didn't see me, I just wanted to add to that. I think our food services director also will see some reduction with the reduction of kitchens that she's staffing. And so she needs to factor that in. And also, she has actually been creating a little bit of fund balance each year, so there might be a natural reduction there, even if we weren't talking about this at this point. So I think, I think those things will minimize the impact.
And then as far as the transfer to capital, that's, that's like the extra work that we try to get done in the regular budget, which is the other reason why proposition two is important, because now we, instead of pulling it from our general fund budget, we can pull it from the capital reserve.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Similarly, in, in terms of the reduction here, I see obviously the, of the, for number three, the one that hurts the most, from an emotional standpoint, obviously. But it's, you know, a total of 1.25 million. Is there any other place that we could take that kind of money from? Is this last resort?
This is the last resort.
Okay, thank you. And when looking at the transportation budget, I know I asked this last time, but I wanted to be more specific, because it's our biggest increase. I feel like we need to interrogate it a bit, so it's not that I don't value your insights. I'm just trying to understand it myself. We talked about when we approved the contract, that those are, those runs are costed by the hour and by the size of the bus, correct? And obviously, I recognize that we'll do everything, always, to protect our kids with special needs and get them what they need. But for the general education population, is there no savings potential scenarios for bus stops, for example, or other ways in which we could shorten those bus routes? I know from my own personal bus route, for example, I mean, we literally watched the bus stop at every house going down the road, when there's a public park at the end of our street, that we could easily collect 20 kids or more in one go, and the bus could keep going.
There are state, there are limits.
Okay.
They're not supposed to go door to door. Unfortunately, I think what happens a lot of times is, you know, bus drivers are very nice people, and, you know, they, they want to be kind, and the weather's cold, they don't want to make it. So there are, there, there are reasons sometimes beyond our control. You know, but when you're as large as we are, you know, how do you ask a parent who lives all the way at the end of the district, well, you have to drive your kid five miles to meet other kids at a bus stop? You know, then it becomes an equity issue.
Yeah, I agree, but I think some parents would love to have that conversation when they're thinking about, you know, reduction of BOSI services, or field trips, or equipment, or special education, or instructional positions. Like, I just wonder if it isn't a question?
Well, you also have to remember, we have to make sure we have, we have a bus stop for every child. Because if there's an emergency, you know, every kid has to be able to get on a bus and go home. Even if they don't take a bus 99% of the time, that's what the early dismissal is for. The early dismissal is so every student knows, if there's an emergency, what bus they're supposed to get on to go home.
But I, as I understand it, not every family now has a bus stop at their home. Some families do have to drive, if they live on a private road.
Yeah, but like I said, there's limits, they don't have to drive. Everything has to be within walking distance. They have to walk, I think, I'm not sure if it's a half a mile.
It depends on the, the grade limit. I mean, we can, we can look at all of the routes, and our transportation director does each summer, because it, it all shifts as children progress through grade levels at the school. What we have to ensure we're doing is providing consistent and the same level of service, equitable, yeah, service across the district. That's where we, we need to stay within the bounds of the law. But we can, I mean, we can look at everything.
Yeah.
If, if there's a, if there's a group of parents who want to volunteer to have a group bus stop, and that's voluntary, and everybody agrees, then we can look at that. But we can't take necessarily have inequity in what we are offering.
Understood. Yeah, I'm just thinking, some parents live on private roads, for example, and they have to drive.
Correct.
Because we're not allowed to travel private roads.
Right, but that, but I'm just saying, so if there's an emergency, we have a plan for those kids. We know there's a plan for, to get those kids to a safe place, even, because we know their parents might not be at the end of that street.
They need to be.
So wouldn't it be the same for kids at a bus stop, is what I'm saying? Wouldn't it be, we could follow that same precedent?
We can, we can try. But it's not, their, their end of their private road is the same in the eyes of the state as-
A driveway.
Someone's driveway. That is their driveway, that private road.
Okay, yeah, I, and I, again, I trust that it's been gone through, I just, I just think it's a, it's a big conversation.
It is.
And it's, in some ways, it's a luxury. I've benefited from it myself, right, that our kids are, are safely transported directly to our door. I don't take that for granted, and I want to be really clear about that. But I've, you know, I've researched this in other districts, and even growing up myself in a rural area, I walk to the end of my road, and for the bus stop to come flying down a very busy road. I mean, this is just something that I've been thinking a lot about, particularly because it could potentially be a win-win for fewer snow days if kids aren't up the hill, or for when we have electric buses and buses can't go up the hills. We might be wanting, thinking a little bit about how we reduce the transportation budget at this point, and be thinking about potential savings for other benefits down the road. My only last question was just about your strategy discussion, Superintendent, about, you know, if we do have a late budget and what we could do. I'm curious if the, if we went with your suggestion of, sorry, I'm looking to make sure I'm using the right terminology, of the, of using more of the fund balance? Is that a potential, is that, if we said we were going to use the fund balance, for example, and then we got the money in the end, but it came in May, could we then bring that money, could we take action to put that money back into a fund balance? If we've-
Yes. So what ends up happening is you, you don't use the fund balance.
Right.
What ends up happening is that your revenues will exceed what you expected, so then you, then it actually, the difference comes out of fund balance, appropriate fund balance, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we could legally move it back. Thank you very much.
I have a question about the reduction, the potential reduction to special edu, I mean, to BOSI's services. And that doesn't affect our special education students at all, right? Can you tell us a little bit about what that would be?
So really, what we're looking at is content specialists. And I know Stephanie's already given me the evil eye, because she loves her content specialists, and we all love our content specialists. And, you know, it's a luxury. A lot of schools don't get the luxury of content specialists, and we have two this year. So we would be looking to reduce one of them. And, you know, and, and again, tweaking little things here and there, but that's really the biggest, and that would be the biggest reduction.
I have just one more question about the purchase of the two buses, the 28 passenger and the 66 passenger. For us to purchase those buses and then employ the drivers to drive them, is that actually a savings for us over what it would cost if we added two more runs to our contract?
Well, it's hard to say. I mean, there are benefits to having in-house drivers and in-house runs, because then we're not at, at the mercy of, of a first student. And then if a first student doesn't have a driver, and then we still have to do the run, we have found field trips that go out during the day are actually cheaper for us than it is for, for a student, things like that. And I can tell that Superintendent McLaren already knows an answer.
I just wanted to clarify, those are replacement of vehicles we currently have.
Correct.
Not additions and not additional drivers or salaries.
Yes, correct. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. Is that what you were, is that what you were saying?
I thought that was maybe unclear.
See, I missed that one too.
It's all right.
I'm off my game tonight. Too much sugar.
Thank you. And actually, I do have one more question. The, the high school generator project, that, is that, that's not being funded by this, this capital reserve fund? That's being funded in what way?
So that is being funded through the ARP grant money that's coming from the federal government, that has to be spent by September of '24. So again, this is so that, that 1.95 million that, that we're looking to put on, on the ballot is, is basically a, you know, to, to allow us, in the worst case, still have a generator come September, if for some reason it's late. If we need to, we can then shift the ARP money to something else, but you can't shift other money in the budget to the generator. Because it's a capital project, it has to be capital money. That's really where the issue lies.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
You are so welcome.
And we're moving on to our next presentation. Superintendent McLaren is going to present the Scope survey results, and the communication committee is not going to co-present, we're just going to receive the information along with our trustee colleagues.
I see John is queuing it up. So this is the survey. that we had administered. You can see it has ENSPRA, which is the National School Public Relations Association, down here on the bottom right of the cover page. So this is what was provided to us. We did not create this document. It was really done by them as a third party. But I wanted to go over, we got a presentation, and so I'm trying to take some of the pertinent information that they provided for us and share it. But really, this has been on the board docs, and people can comb through it. I'm not necessarily going to stop at every single slide because that would take us about two hours. But I thought I would take the highlights that the professional pointed out to us and share them. So on this slide, basically just gives you the detail of our participation rate. So our goals, our targets were to have 5% of parents, 5% of staff, and 10% of our community. And we came very close on community, and we hit our targets for the other two. And she indicated that was very good participation, and we should be pleased with that. This chart, I apologize, there are a lot of numbers. Basically, if you look at this chart, we are comparing our results to the national average. So the columns on the very far right are the highest and lowest scores received ever. So those are kind of the outlier boundaries. She indicated that when looking at these results, if you look at the first line, the overall perception of the district for parents, our result was 3.6, the national average is a 3.8. They considered that difference to be very minimal, and that that 3.6 would be considered to be at the national average. So that is kind of the context for all of those results. So in terms of the overall rating of the perception of the district, she thought it was noteworthy that about 60% of parents viewed the district as excellent or above average. And you can see the employees even had a more favorable judgment of the district. There's a slide like this for each of the categories. And she noted that we are unusual in that sometimes the size of all of the words is similar. But for us, community is consistently the largest word. So this is the overall ratings with communication and satisfaction with communication from the district. And it was also interesting that overall, parents had the highest rating of communication from the district. And you'll see that the charts are very similar in structure with each grouping that is covered in this presentation. So how stakeholders currently receive information. She said the fact that email was the most frequently received was very common. But then, if you look at the next column over, what other people tell me, 51% is how people receive information daily and weekly. And that might be a strong correlation with the fact that our district has a strong sense of community. She did note that on the far right, that stakeholders currently receiving information from the board, that really is naturally lower because board meetings are not daily or weekly, and this is more of a frequency question. Social media sources used by stakeholders. Facebook is used far more than any other social media platform. But she did say that as things shift over time, and we have a lot of younger parents, Instagram may take over that first place, but we haven't seen that yet. Top five sources of information. Email ranks very high for parents and employees, those people who are more intimately related with the district. Obviously, for the community, that is not such a strong source of information. Back to what other people tell me is really the most common for people in the community. She noted, when she was presenting to us, that especially for parents, the website being number five is really something that we can look to help people with. There's so much information that is available on our website, and we need to help people figure out where to look for it. And so, again, she noted stakeholder preferences for information. For community members, they actually ranked the website the highest. So that's really worth noting. This is the highest preference and is almost tied with printed information for the community. So just something to note. Obviously, as was described in prior slides, email is rated highest among employees and parents. So stakeholder preferences for information, information about school closings and early dismissals, serious incidents, and school crises. It's pretty natural that this type of information that is time-sensitive, people would be looking for that information through automated calls and text messages. There's a lot of papers here. Stakeholder preferences for information related to school and district events, program and calendar updates. It's interesting, parents and employees prefer email. Community members prefer the website followed closely by email and then printed information. I think we were all a little surprised by that, but it's good information and good to keep in mind as we move forward. Preferences for information about school and district leader decisions, goals, plans, finances, and related issues. Again, email was a strong contender. The community members preferred printed, followed by the website, followed by email. Very different from family or employee preferences. So also good to know as we are trying to connect with our community more. Stakeholder preferences for optimizing ONTORA, the district grade and restructuring plans. Again, family and employee preferences, email, but community preference is website, printed, and then email. It's really interesting to me that the community is ranking the website as the most preferred source of information. How informed stakeholders are in key areas, such as district successes and achievements. It was just notable that the staff feels the most informed, but also that 65% of the community feel moderately informed or better. That's a really good result, according to our survey provider. How informed stakeholders are in key areas about student successes and achievements. So these are ways that we can look to improve our communications with our stakeholders. So obviously, the employees feel very, very informed. 50% are extremely, and another 33 are moderately. So that's a good result, but I think we can look at this and strive to do much better for our parents and our community members. And the next few slides, I think, are just additional good information. I don't necessarily have comments about every individual slide. As I said, we would be here for a very long time. But this information is all very useful and is going to be used as we create our long-term communications plan. How informed stakeholders are about district finances. Apparently, this is a very typical result, but again, also worth pursuing improvements in. Stakeholders feeling informed about school safety, school closings, incidents, and crises. These results are all very high scores and considered very positive, which is great. How informed stakeholders are about district facilities. Apparently, this is also a typical result, but I'm a little surprised because we do try and keep everybody informed about the improvements we're doing in our district facilities. But again, obviously, a place that we can work towards improving. So this chart is showing how people feel about whether they know where and how to direct a question, a complaint, or a concern. These are seen as very good results, which is really good. I think people do feel comfortable addressing concerns with us. And again, we have a number of slides that I don't necessarily have talking points on, but all good information. And so, one of the other things that we need to focus on is in all of these slides, we have people who are undecided in this group of slides. And this is another key area where we can try and focus our efforts in our communication plan because we would obviously like to turn undecided into strongly agree and agree. Yeah. I mean, these are all very informative, but not necessarily something to talk about on every single slide.
Superintendent McLaren, could we pause for a minute and see if there are any questions?
Yes, I'm sorry. There are just so many slides. I don't want to overwhelm everybody, but
Right, thank you. Trustee Jerome?
Sure, I just wanted to first remind everybody, so this is about our communication with the districts and the stakeholder categories being parents, community members, and
Employees.
And staff, employees. And so some of the results, as you look at them, you know, you'll see that parents respond, rate email very highly, of course, because they're signed up for, with their email addresses to the district. Whereas you're going to see members of the community maybe engaging more with the website because that's, or print, actually, because that's what they're able to access easily. So I just want to remind people, as they go ahead and they actually examine, there's so much in there. It's, you had an impossible task. You have to sort of study it, but keep those things in mind. You know, we did well. We are poised to do a lot better. I hope people are signing up for, to get email notifications. I hope they are looking at our website. When you look at that first page, yeah, we did well. But we're actually an incredible district, and my child is in this district. And we have incredible administration staff, students. You know, we're doing it right, so we want to get better about getting that message out to people, and we encourage people to connect, you know, whether that's signing up for email or whatever it is, and asking questions. We're trying to really improve. We're trying to be better. So I guess those are just my only comments.
Other questions? Or comments? Okay, onward.
Thank you so much, trustee Jerome. I appreciate your feedback there, or your contribution. Again, good participation across our district. This is the parent participation by location. And you can see that not only have we covered all of our own buildings, but also our students and our families who are being served by full-day Ulster BOSI's programs, which is great. And again, community is featured largest in this graph across all of our different participation groups. Again, email is most favored and followed closely by what other people say, and social media for parents. So sources of information for parents that are the two most preferred methods for each of the following types of information. So for general district news and information, it's email and text. Preferred sources for parents. For school closings, auto call and text, not surprising. About school district events, programs, and calendar updates, email and text. About school and district leader decisions, goals, plans, finances, and related issues, email and website. And then about the optimizing ONTORA grade configuration, email and website. I don't think this chart is going to surprise anyone either. The two preferred methods of communication about your students' progress, email and the parent portal, favored highly. In looking at charts about the quantity of information, basically, what are, what our survey provider said was this is pretty typical, and generally, you will not see parents say that they want less information. So we can always strive to do better. And again, these charts follow the same structure as the charts for the other groups. They're very informative, but we do see this data presented in different ways through the survey results. So I'm not going to speak to each and every one, but they are there to be reviewed and digested. The employees' only results, again, we got really good participation, which we're quite pleased with. And again, even for employees, community is really the largest featured word. Sources of information for employees, I don't think there are a lot of surprises in that chart. The preferred sources, sorry, there's so many slides here behind. So employees, about general district news and information, email obviously outweighs everything, and then the website, which I was glad to see. School closings is going to be texts. About school and district events, email and website. About school and district leader decisions and goals, email and website, and optimizing ONTORA, email and website. I'm really glad that our employees are are able to access the website and finding information that they can use.
Another quick question.
Yeah.
Will this be, this is available, this will be available on the website, or is it already available?
It's posted on board docs.
Okay, great.
So we can absolutely move it onto the website proper, but for the agenda, it's posted as public for anyone who wants to look at it.
Okay, maybe put it on that optimizing ONTORA page. And also, I did want to mention that we have an FAQ section now. We can't, you know, we're trying to go through them, but, you know, encourage people to also submit questions to the board. Again, trying to be better about answering community questions and parent questions.
So again, not a surprise. Our staff prefer to get information through email. Quantity of information, there is again, not typically anyone who says, give me less information. How employees are informed, how well they feel they are informed in key areas. And the quality of communication for key areas for employees within the district. Quality of communication for employees in the workplace, and that brings us to the community results. I apologize for the length of this, but we didn't want to leave anything out. Again, community is the largest word followed by small and teachers and caring, which I think is really lovely and very much describes our district. For our community, how often you use the following forms of district or school communication to learn information. Really interesting that what other people tell me is the highest rated, most frequently used method of gathering information for our community members. used um method of gathering information for our community members. Preferred sources of information for the community about general district news, again, uh, the website and printed information. About school closings, uh, early dismissals, texts and email, that's not surprising. About school and district events and programs and calendar updates, updates is website and email. School district leader decisions, uh, et cetera, is printed material followed by the website and the same optimizing Ontario is the website followed by printed material. So again, I'm, I'm actually really pleased that the community is accessing the website and seeing it as a good source of information. Um, and in the community participant section, uh, you can see that we had a wide range of ages um of our community members who participated, but thirty percent of our participants are seventy-one years of age or older, so um, but I think we got a really good swath across between uh twenty-two to thirty and over seventy-one. And again, um, these charts are not different particularly from what we've seen in the other sections, but they are worth spending some time and looking at them and I I feel like um we've gotten a lot of really helpful information and we are using this as we um construct our communications plan. And to trustee Jerome's um point about the FAQ section on the website, I think I've uh, I've actually requested with our director of technology that at the next meeting, I would like to have a laptop up here so that I can actually work through the different pages because I think we have some really great sources of information and I think people are accessing them, but I'm all for helping people understand where to go to find the information they need. We have, um, I think trustee Lynch brought up, how do people know how to donate to the district? We have a form for that. Um, people have indicated in the survey that they understand who to call when they have a problem, but we do have a page with a procedure for that. The optimizing Ontario page has a lot of information and we are trying to build that out. So I'd like to show that um in a board meeting so that people have a sense of how we are trying to improve.
Any questions for superintendent?
I'm sorry, it's not a dynamic presentation, but there's so much good information.
It was riveting. Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, just a comment, um, but also as a member of the communications committee, I just want to um thank the district for investing in this tool. Um, I think it's just so important and I, and I also just want to be real with um anybody who's listening to our meeting that, you know, uh, we see the other words that aren't, um, that weren't highlighted, right, around being, you know, whatever frustrated or divided and other things and I, it's, and, and the board has received all of the um individual comments that came in as well. Uh, we couldn't share those publicly just because many of them are, are quite personal or, or help or ident, or somehow identify who they are. Um, but we've read it all and we're taking all of it um uh into it, you know, into, into our larger thinking as we um uh work alongside the district and, and quote unquote, you know, optimizing our communications as well as in other areas of, of the district and working alongside um these, some, you know, PR professionals that we've been able to work with through BOSI's, um, who, and as superintendent said, we're developing a long-term communications plan with all of this in mind. So thanks to the community and the parents and this particularly the staff who took some time to really give us all of that um detail and, and just know that I think it's a really worthwhile investment.
Thank you, trustee Lynch. Trustee Goodrich?
Yeah, I just want to add to uh what uh was previously said there. We, we spent a lot of uh time and effort looking through all the responses. I know talking to the trustees, uh, we, we, we read them all. So it, it took quite a few hours over multiple days, but you know, it was interesting. One of the comments that I, I got from reading the individual surveys is uh, you know, we could probably do a better job on our calendar. I was looking at some of the other school districts and their calendars are a lot more busier, but they got a lot more information, so that's another area. But we're doing really good here, improving our communication. And I think the communications committee and uh our superintendent deserve a lot of credit.
Thank you, trustee Goodrich. Anyone on this side? I don't want to, okay. Trustee Jerome?
I just wanted to thank trustee Lynch for bringing up the fact that there were very serious comments that we are, that's where I say we did okay, we're going to do better, but um thank you for acknowledging that.
Anything else? Anyone? Okay, great. Thank you, superintendent McLaren. Moving on to item six point zero one, acceptance of minutes. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the March fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Jerome? We'll just start with a roll call uh voting now. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, great. That's unanimous. Thanks, everyone. Superintendent, district news, no rest for the weary.
All good. All right, um, so I'm going to start off with the solar eclipse. So we have been trying to learn as much as possible about the solar eclipse and unfortunately, much like other situations such as air quality and pandemics, we are uh again placed in a position where we need to make decisions in situations that are not our specialty, but our priority is the safety of our students. Um, so after weighing the information that we have and the timing of our normal school day, uh, as an administrative team, we decided that um it was safest for our students to dismiss early on April eighth. So our secondary students will be dismissed at twelve twenty and our elementary students will be dismissed at one twenty. And this will allow students to be brought back home before the most impactful portion of the eclipse. I will be sending that out to faculty, staff and parents tomorrow, um, hoping that this gives people um an adequate amount of time to plan. Uh, superintendent's conference day, many thanks to assistant superintendent Laffin and the administrative team for creating a valuable conference day last week. Assistant superintendent Laffin and I visited many of the sessions throughout the day and were so impressed with both our faculty and staff and the presenters. We have shared a feedback form with uh the faculty and staff so that we can continue to learn and improve and that was our final conference day for this school year. Kindergarten enrollment, we are still registering incoming kindergarten students. Our enrollment projection is for seventy-one students. We currently have thirty-four registered. So if you have an incoming kindergarten student or you know a family with an incoming kindergartner, please contact our registrar or encourage families to register their students so that we can um start to transition them into our buildings. In terms of transition planning, the administrative team made decisions regarding staff assignments for the coming school year, uh, taking into account the requests from staff and the needs of each of the buildings. Those individuals whose choice, because remember we did put out a survey and ask faculty and staff where they would like to be next year. So for those individuals whose choice was not able to be honored, um, they were met with individually and in person so that they would have the opportunity for a conversation. And uh, we just want to make sure everybody understands the majority of those placements will likely stand, but assignments may still change depending on our state aid outcomes as well as any uh changing student needs. But we had committed to letting everyone know in March and we wanted to make sure that we fulfilled that commitment. On this agenda, we are approving a contract with one of our community members who will be facilitating community forums, um, looking to co-create our central campus vision. When we have the dates set, we will publicize them so everyone can participate and we anticipate completing this particular step in our planning process by the end of this school year. There will be more information coming, um, once we can begin our work with this facilitator and we are really excited to be working with a communicator, or I'm sorry, a community member who is a skilled professional facilitator. Uh, for our school calendar for next year, we have revised the calendar after getting additional feedback. We have reduced the number of snow days to seven so that we can include Monday, December twenty-third in the winter break. We had intended to bring the revised calendar to the board for approval tonight, but we had a miscommunication, so it is not on the agenda. Um, my apologies. We will have it, um, it is actually right now on our website. When you click on our district and on the right-hand side, there's usually the ta, the tab for the one-page calendar. At the bottom of that menu, there is a tab for the draft twenty-four, twenty-five school district calendar because I wanted to ensure that people had access to it so they could get, begin planning for next year. For sports, congratulations to our girls varsity basketball coach uh and the team for having such an incredible season, but our coach was named coach of the year for girls' basketball in section nine, class B. Um, anyone who knows Coach Aki, Coach Aki knows that he is dedicated and passionate and has always given his all to our athletes, so I'm glad he's been recognized by his peers in this way. Also, our boys varsity basketball team and coach have been selected for the sportsmanship award for the twenty-three, twenty-four season for Ulster County as chosen by the um game officials. So these are really wonderful honors and great recognition. Uh, our spring sports season is underway and if mother nature could provide us with some warmer weather, I'm sure the athletes would appreciate it. Our middle and high school students will be performing the School of Rock musical on April twelfth and thirteenth in the evening with a matinee on Sunday, the fourteenth. Please know you can purchase tickets online or at the door. Uh, the productions that our students put on are consistently exceptional and I highly recommend attending the show if you are able. As it stands today, although uh as we know in Ontario, this could change, but right now we have two remaining emergency or snow days. If we do not use either of those, we will not have school on May twenty-fourth and May twenty-eighth, thereby extending the Memorial Day weekend. Next week is spring break, uh, although it is a break for students and all ten-month employees. Also, many of our twelve-month staff will be taking vacation during this time, so if you are reaching out to someone, um, please be aware, you may uh have to wait for an answer until the following week, um, just so you know. As I mentioned just before, we're working to provide more information on our website and um the board will be providing a monthly email. This was the other thing that I forgot to mention when I um go through the website at our next meeting, I'll, I'll try and feature this as well, but if you go to the board page and click on board briefs, which is now a new link on the top right, the latest board email that went out in March is featured there now. Senator Hinchey is holding a press conference on Friday afternoon at three fifteen in Kingston with the New York State um United Teachers, with local teachers and superintendents to form a united front against the proposed cuts to foundation aid in this year's executive budget. Although both uh the senate and assembly budget proposals reject the cuts, the senator is actively working to continue to elevate this issue as the three-way budget negotiations are occurring um before the April first state budget deadline, which I don't think we're going to make, but um I'm certainly planning on attending the press conference to show our support. I know some of our board trustees are as well, um, but anyone else who wants to, uh, please join us.
Any questions for the superintendent? Trustee Lynch?
Thank you. Roughly, um, do you have a rough percentage of how many staff got their choice in terms of their placement? Okay.
I don't have that by percentage, but I can certainly figure that out, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah. Was it a majority or, or less than half?
Yes, no, it was absolutely a majority.
Okay, yeah.
Absolutely a majority.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? I have, I just.
I have one question. Um, you mentioned kindergarten registration. Do you have a number at this time of how many kindergarteners we have registered so far?
We have thirty-four registered so far. Our projection is for seventy-one, so we're hoping that um, we're hoping that registration will pick up.
When is screening scheduled for?
The, the first week in June, the first four days of the, I think the third, fourth, fifth and sixth, with orientations the following week.
Okay, great. That's, so we do still have time. I just hope people come and register their kids. Great, thank you. Next up is our student reps report. Sophia Odato?
Hello, everyone. So recently in student government, we met with middle school student government and they shared their latest events, their latest one being a dodgeball tournament that they're planning, which will take place in May. Um, we shared our progress with our outdoor classroom and how Mr. Edelman ordered seven more benches for us to receive in the spring. Um, we also shared the mural contest that we're about to launch that we're, that we're excited about. Um, throughout the high schools, spring sports have recently begun and our athletes thoroughly enjoyed last week's nice weather. As springtime comes, keep your eyes peeled for fundraisers. The senior class will be holding a fundraiser on Saturday, April sixth, at the Kings Valley Diner to raise funds for prom. If you'd like to support us, please order a pancake breakfast from the hours of eight AM to noon. Um, the junior class is currently organizing a Krispy Kreme donut fundraiser. The sophomores are holding a fundraiser at Santa Fe as we speak, actually. The high school orchestra recently had their field trip to Albany where they played their, their pieces and celebrated music in our schools month. The Spanish club recently went on a field trip to Alba's Kitchen in Woodstock where they ate Salvadorian food. And lastly, students are very excited for spring break and are very ready for Friday.
Any questions for Sophia? Sophia, I have a question and I don't, I don't know um how you can go about gathering information or if you just have a, a sense of it, but I'm wondering um how the um secondary students feel about the sixth graders moving in next year. Do, do you have a sense of, of uh how they're feeling about that?
Yeah, I think we don't talk about it that much. I think there's like a little bit of confusion on how everyone's going to fit. Yeah, I think, I think people are just kind of waiting for it to happen and then they're going to make their opinions, but yeah.
Thank you. Okay, on to item nine point zero one, we're going to take a break. Um, it says five minutes, it might be a ten-minute break, but um let's try to get back in ten minutes, sh, sharp. It says five minutes. It might be a 10-minute break, but let's try to get back in 10 minutes, sharp.
All right, we are back from our break. On to item 10.01, Board District News. Do any trustees have news to report? Trustee Story?
Yes, last week trustee Bishop and trustee Goodrich and I and superintendent McLaren attended Ulster County School Boards Association meeting down at in New Paltz. SED, a panel from SED was there and giving us updates and stuff. And I asked a question about when if the if SED was going to allow districts to use a third-party review for our architectural reviews and everything like that. Because it was an option that was allowed, districts were allowed to use up until this year, this year or last year. And now this is something that's, the district has run into issues because we were supposed to do, part of our summer work was redoing the middle school gym. And our plans didn't come back from SED in time for us to send that stuff out. So that is delaying us on redoing our middle school gym for a whole nother year. So this is why I had asked if we were going back to the third-party review, which the state said they will hopefully be able to go back to this in the fall. So hopefully doing this will get school districts to get their, our projects done. One thing that they said is that any, for facilities planning, they are putting anything with electric vehicles ahead of school districts that have to do business, do not, do projects. So that's one of the reasons why our gym again was put thing, put on the back burner because of the EV buses. They did say that the state in SED has put in three, to get three people in facilities planning. But if anybody knows how New York State works and they put that in the budget, it's going to be probably about six months to a year till the state can hire three people to do that. So it's something that's well needed. I think that's about it.
Any other trustees have district news to report? Trustee Lynch?
I just want to congratulate the music department. I was able to attend one of the all-county music programs. It was held down at the New Paltz High School for the elementary school and then in the middle school, junior high kids. And it was an absolutely outstanding performance. And Auntie Ora should be very proud of the number of children that were sent for both bands. And the feedback from the conductor was, who by the way traveled over 300 miles to have the opportunity to meet with the Ulster County, all-county band, which was kind of amazing. And had said that he had heard incredible things and how talented these young musicians are. So kudos to the music program and to these particular students. They did a great job.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. And I'll just add that I was able to, to go to Albany last week with the Bennett Orchestra and Jazz Band and the Youth Corral. And they performed a number of really great songs and, you know, it's, it's funny, same thing last year. I happened to sit right behind the, the gentleman who's kind of in, from NISMA, who's kind of emceeing the show and everything. And I, I noticed it last year and again this year. And I feel like, not because I have personal stake in it, but they are just so much better this year than they were last year. And I watch him and his, like, he's tapping his feet and he's like getting into the music and everything. And he's like looking at the person next to him going, wow, you know? I just was so proud. They, they're really, really great. We have great teachers and, and great students. All right, thanks everybody. On to public student comment. We did not have any comments at the last meeting. So, public and students may comment on any agenda or non-agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from the public, including students, on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand that by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the board can't engage in discussion or answer questions during public be heard. Please know that we hear you and we take all of your comments into consideration. The board does reserve the right to correct any inaccuracies or misinformation during public be heard. Please limit your comments to three minutes, be civil, and do not name any particular individuals or promote any commercial ventures or products. People wishing to express individual student or personal, personnel concerns can bring them to the superintendent's attention in private. Kara Kolevis?
I'm Kara. First, I wanted to say thank you so much to Jillian and our incredible staff and all the students who participated in the talent show. It was really a incredible experience to witness and be part of, so she did a whole lot over there, so thank you. Also, I wanted to plug our yard and plant sale, which is Saturday, May 4th. So if anyone wants to sell anything, come get a table. It's a great time to shop and browse. I also wanted to thank the communications committee because that email that went out with the board briefs was so refreshing and so nice to have just a summary and a high level of what's happening. And I think that's going to help some of the feedback in terms of the community. So thank you all for your work on that. I wanted to touch upon something that trustee Goodrich mentioned at the last meeting. He was remarking on Ms. Leclair's previous presentation about transportation and how the transportation budget will be reduced by, I think, a little over 500,000 by closing Phoenisha. And I just wanted to say I support his suggestion to share out to taxpayers how and where money is going to be saved, in part so we know what's happening with Phoenisha and then also because of Woodstock. So it'd be very helpful to know the breakdown and where monies are saved and where it's going to go. That's it. I also wanted to say to trustee Lynch, also thank you for mentioning the range of opinions on the survey, because I did also see some words that were sad and not pointed out. And I get, it's important to showcase the highlights and the positives, but also some of those words are of concern. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Esther Danton?
Okay. Hi. Yeah, I want to just echo the thanks for the communication thing. Like, it's just, it was brilliant to see all that data and, and that everything that you're doing is kind of working. So, and it's just, yeah, great to know how to reach people and all of that kind of stuff. So thank you. And thank you for all the work that you guys continue to do on, like, the reorganization of the district. That's brilliant. And it's really great to hear that you're opening the door for like, further communication and dialogue with the community. Because I've been really excited to get involved with conversations about restructuring. Because I think it's, it feels to me like we're obviously really sad that Phoenisha has had to close its doors and it's really, really sad for that, that, the community. And we feel for the families that are going to have to transition their kids next year and all of that. But it's also really apparent to me that there's a wonderful community in Woodstock and the talent show and the science fair and all these like wonderful community events that we've had recently has just kind of really sort of cemented that view in my head. And I think there could be a view of the district where we can have a community of elementary kids here and a community, community of elementary kids in the central district that really services those two communities. And I just didn't want us to like, I know that you're doing really good work to ready the ground for this big change, but I would hope that we could perhaps keep the door open for any kind of, you know, slight changes along the way that might include a slightly different view of what the district could look like. And that's really just to support the fact that the community may not necessarily contract, but we, you know, it may expand or it may, we, we just have a, a lot of really good campuses. And I think rather than just keep moving to contract, there may be another way that we could organize it. And I'd love to be part of the conversation if you are doing that. So I'm just raising my hand as a, as a parent and a stakeholder in this community that I would love to be involved. So I will keep my eye out for the invitation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Introduce yourself, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Megan Brenner. I am a mother of three. I have a four-year-old. No students are enrolled yet, but they are future Auntie Ora students and twin one-year-olds. I'm a Woodstock resident. It's been a while since I've been up here. I used to try to come to every meeting, but life gets in the way. So thank you first and foremost for all the work that you've all done. Communications Committee, we, we see you and the results, you know, the intended outcome of like more transparency, thank you. I haven't spent a ton of time with the new optimized website, but I plan to. So I'm very much looking forward to all the data and the plans that are there and available. I also wanted to thank you, or excuse me, note, note something, Victoria, that you had shared about the upcoming gatherings, the discussions, the community discussions. Very much looking forward to getting involved with that. I hope I had the opportunity to, because I didn't last time with the World Cafes. I'm curious, ahead of those discussions, if there will be a refreshed data set for us to look at on the current demographics. I know that there's pockets of data as a part of our overall district narrative, and it's very, it seems, it's, it's very fragmented, but I'm wondering if we can refresh, for instance, like some of the survey data that's done in the past to, to, to give us a clearer understanding of what the, like the total pie, if you will, of school-aged children or rising school-aged children is. And what I mean by that is, I know of a lot of students that are future Auntie Ora students, but they're not current students. And I hear the number of the 30 registered for kindergarten and that's, that's an alarming number, especially given plans, there are plans for 70. But I'm wondering if there's a way to survey, and I feel like I keep coming back to the data, but that's, that's how we inform our decision-making. Everything should be evidence-based, right? Like, that's, that's how, that's how decisions are made in, in the world. Prove us in the pudding. Is there a way to survey the district and get an accurate sense of the total number of students, rising and current student population? And then also, is there a way to understand families or students that may be at risk for departure or attrition with closures? For instance, I know that parents have an abundance of options available in the district and outside, whether it's homeschooling or alternative methods of education or private. So I'm just wondering if, if we can get like a pulse on the parents that may choose to leave should our schools close. I am not one of them. Just want to make that clear. Thank you all so much, very much, for listening to me.
Thank you, Megan. Anybody else care to speak? Great, thank you. It's been a long time since we've had speakers. All right. So we're on to item 13.01, Discussion and Possible Action. And this is in reference to the approval of the Proposition Two District-Wide Capital Improvement Project. Be it hereby resolved on recommendation by the superintendent of schools, that the Board of Education of the Antioch, Antioch Central School District submit the following proposition, the District-Wide Capital Improvement Project to be included on the ballot at the annual meeting and election to be held on May 21st, 2024. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second, trustee Ramondo. This is just what we reviewed earlier in the meeting, right? Righto. Okay, no comments. And I'm, I'm not going to read that entire resolution. Okay. All right. So we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous, thank you. Next up is, let me make sure I didn't skip anything. 1401, the Consent Agenda. The board hereby approves items number 14.02 through 14.10. May I have a first? I'm sorry?
I have reviews scheduled, you and everything appears to be in order.
Okay, great. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second, trustee Jerome? And we will, any questions or comments? Thanks for reviewing that. No, it's okay. It's all right. We do first, then second, then comments. Oh, yes.
I just wanted to take a moment and thank everyone who has provided us with donations this year. We very much appreciate it.
So we'll vote. Trustee Jerome?
Ooh, aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous, thank you. 14, oh wait, oops. Hello. Yep. I always forget to turn the page there. Item 15.01, approve all contracts and independent contract retainers. The board hereby approves item numbers 15.02 through 15.04. May I have a first? Trustee Jerome, second. Trustee Story? Any comments or questions? Okay, we'll vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
And trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, great, that's unanimous. 16.01, the second reading and adoption of policy 3210, Visitors to the School. The Board of Education hereby adopts policy, excuse me, 3210 as written. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Goodrich? Any comments? We'll vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
And trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, great, unanimous, thank you all. And on to committee reports. What committees have met? Has communications met since our last board meeting? I can't remember. We did. Did? We do.
I think I was on the train.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
And, and, um, yes, so I could, well, I, I remember we just, we were discussing a lot of what ended up being in the email that went out to the district. And trying to provide balance to the answers in lieu of how different people within the district might feel and sort of give guidance and feedback to the superintendent on that. Just trying to occupy different points of view. And then also, we talked about the FAQs, but then I got in the tunnel and I was seen, so.
We talked about the what? The advocacy?
The, uh, I think the FAQs.
What'd you say? Oh, FAQs. Right, right, right. Yes. Yes. Anything else?
Then we just prepared for this presentation.
Right, that's right.
The survey results, yeah.
Right. And yeah, I guess just another plug for anybody who is not a parent or not a staff member who is currently receiving our emails or superintendent McLaren's emails, please tell your neighbors, tell your friends, tell your family, anybody who lives in the district who wants to get information from the board. We, you know, we're really trying very hard to spread the word. Trustee Story?
With the, the well-received emails that the board is doing, is the communications committee going to set up like a calendar of this is when you, to expect, you know, some future, we said we're sending out monthly board emails, so how are we going to do that? That's, you know, have you thought about that process? What day are you going to pick a same day and release it or, you know, more of the detailed process that, because this was received very well and is something we want to continue. So this is now something that has to continue on.
I do know that the, the information from the February meetings is already being reviewed and we're, we're, you know, that's in process. So I don't know, I, you know, I, I hadn't thought about, you know, making it a specific date. Trustee Lynch, do you have a?
Yeah, no, thank you, trustee Story. It's important in that we're consistent. So what we've looked at is just our own calendar. We meet the first Wednesday of every month. And so typically what we'll, we want to do is surface the content headlines, you know, what, what would make the most compelling update without going on forever? And then, and then be able to draft something and share it with all of you so that it reflects your thinking as well. And then we could send it out. It usually gets designed, so to speak, for, a light design for the email by the, by the BOSI's colleagues. And so they have a few, you know, an ability to look at it, copyright it, and send it out.
Trustee Jerome?
I feel like we could set that, talking with Holly, because she's the one who ultimately formats it and schedules it and puts all the final touches on it. We just, we hashed out the content. And then, yeah, we have to have a system in review, as we found out this month, for everybody to have a chance to take a look. So I'm assuming it's going to, we'll, we'll come back to you with a definite schedule, but I would say end of the month, you know, it's probably when it's going out, if we meet at the beginning of the month with a review by the board in the middle of the month, but we'll, we'll, we'll firm it up better.
Why don't we come back to the board with something after our beginning, our beginning of April meeting? And talk to, yeah, we'll talk to Holly in that meeting.
Talk to Holly about that, because she's the one who kind of sends it.
Great. Trustee Goodrich?
So the optimization webpage is, also gets frequent updates and the FAQ section. Could you maybe put a date on that webpage on when the last update was made? It's pre, it's very active, so I don't know how often you update the, the FAQ answers.
I think we could probably, we could probably do that in terms of if we do them as a, we're going to try and do a, like a section at a time so that we're not just doing a little bit. So we could probably look at putting a date maybe at the end of each section.
Any other questions or comments for the communications committee? Any other committee reports? Any old busi, oh, trustee Lynch?
Thanks, I just had a question potentially for the facilities committee or superintendent. I heard trustee Story just say, update us that the middle school gym did get a, finally get approved, but obviously not in time to do the work until next year. Is that right? You didn't get it approved. Oh, I'm sorry.
We've never, I, no, I said we didn't get the approval back from SED in order for us to send out. We haven't gotten any of the approval back from SED, no.
I see. Forgive me, okay, great, I'm glad I clarified. I was also just wondering about the roof project in the high school. Is there an update on that?
Same thing. The difference with the roof is that is, we can do the work pretty quickly after approval. So we're still hopeful that we'll do that this summer.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other committee reports? Okay, on to old business? Any old business? Any new business? Trustee Story?
I, tomorrow, I, tomorrow is the Health and Safety Committee meeting and I'm on that. And one of the things that I'm going to bring up, those meetings are confidential because of the, the stuff that we are discussing during this. And I've been thinking about this for a while, even before, but something I want to discuss with the Health and Safety Team is having all students, you know, from middle school up to where student ID badges. I think one of the things that I went to at a NISBA conference years ago was first trainer response. It was, it was a seminar put on about school shootings and stuff like that. And one of the things that it struck me was about when first responders come in, they look for IDs, whether staff wearing IDs and students. So looking at the safety of our students and staff, it's something that I'd like to look into for the district-wide thing and have this discussion starting at our Health and Safety Committee and then bring that to where we need to.
Any other new business? Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to reiterate my request to have a discussion about ways in which we could be centralizing the communities of the two elementary schools in the interim period. I brought it up at the last meeting and I just was hoping we could add that to a future agenda when appropriate.
Any other new business? Any requests for information? Trustee Story?
I just received, this afternoon received the high school principal's update. And it just, I saw that they had the awards for the high school awards, athletic awards was changed from middle of June to the end of March, or end of May. My question is, varsity sports are still in session at that time, so why are we changing it when we have, you know, sports are still, I know tracks, states for tracks, state qualifications for track is the next day after our awards. So I'm just curious to find, find out why we've, it's, I think, it's on the calendar, printed calendar is like Ju, June 11th.
Any other, any other requests for information? Trustee Story, would you like to, motion to adjourn? May I have a second? All in favor? Great, thank you, everybody. We'll